Now does it remote at home, so he plays live from the Facebook on his Facebook site.
Welcome everyone to the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting for the Penn Trafford School District for Monday, February 5th, 2018. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to God, our United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision just as far.
All right, we're going to start tonight's meeting with special reports. IU number seven, Mr. Bill Ladder.
Didn't know I was writing first off the top. Thank you, a pleasure to be here. And I did have a very...I enjoyed my first meeting at the IU. And of course, they discussed budgetary concerns that they had, you know, and they wanted to let me...wanted me to pass on that they had reduced their overall budget from $569,000 to $270,000. And they have some...Dr. Conway has some pretty...looks like some really progressive ideas of sort of an entrepreneurial-type approach to bringing in some, you know, new cash streams and such. And being that it was my first meeting, I...there's a lot to take in. But I...one of the things that I wanted to bring back was the...they had recognized the Harley Owners Group of Latrobe had raised every year. They raise money for the Clearview School. And they were recognized there. And I wanted to bring that back to our homeschool to let people know that there's a lot of people out there doing good works for the, you know, to do their part to contribute to the budgets, you know, and, you know, up at the...up at that school. And I think Dr. Conway's doing a good job, and I hope I do do a good job here tonight explaining that. And he...if there was any questions, he would be more than welcome to come down and talk way more in depth than I could at this point. But with that, it was a very good first meeting. I was really glad to attend it.
All right, thank you. I'm really glad you actually go and participate. So it's nice that we're represented.
Yeah, and I hope I did a good job of bringing back the information as I understood it. But there was a lot, you know, it's...there was a lot to take in.
Thank you for attending, Mr. Ladder.
It was a pleasure to be there.
All right, Career Tech, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we got our audit report from Zelenovsky. Did I pronounce that right, Brett?
Zelenkovsky, yes.
Zelenkovsky, and same one we use in Alxarod. And we met compliance, everything was very satisfactory. If any of my peers wish to have this returned to me next week, you can. I don't know. I don't think everybody's going to run up and look at it, but I just want to offer it to you in case you do want to look at it. We met January 17th. And on the things we discussed that are very significant was we approved the school calendar for '18, '19. Also discussion, remember I mentioned a few months ago, maybe six months ago, Frazier... there are nine school districts in the county that serves on the Career Tech. And Frazier was the alternate school. And Frazier, they're in Fayette County, so therefore they cannot belong to us unless they pay tuition. And what they did, and I think I told you six or eight months ago, they did their...they did shopping around down the valley, Madison, Collinsville. And they shopped around for different Career Techs, what was offered, how much per pupil cost was. And now they're going to extend a contract with us. They did all the homework, and I may feel pretty good that they're going to come back. On beginning July 1st, they'll start the three-year contract, which they had before also. Okay. One thing I wanted, Brett, that they're going to start, and this was my forte in 36 years of teaching, was special education, place these students in life skill class, get them ready for work, unemployment, to keep them off the unemployment list and the welfare list, make them productive citizens. And they're going to start a proposal there at the Career Tech. And the kids will be placed out carpentry, horticulture, masonry, culinary, whatever they're going to be placed in. Let them go there two years. Then their senior year, and of course, they need more time. They'll get more time. They can go...because you're in special education, you can go up to age 21 if you wish. And they'll be in there. And whenever they get the program, the senior year program, which is called a co-op program, four days a week, you're out on a job. And one day a week, you're back in a building for theory. And they do that for seniors, and it's to prepare these kids for lifetime skills. And we hope that that will definitely come about. We're not sure. Now, the proposal now, the budget. Penn Trafford, this year was 78 kids, next year will be 79 kids. We paid $540,000. Next year, it's supposed to be $520,000. Why? Because the total enrollment is going up from 1,000 kids to 1,050 kids. That's a preliminary adjustment. And enrollment of 50 kids, that means potentially, we're paying $20,000 less next year for the tuition cost at the Career Tech. Now, the...how our students did in the competition, they're now being enrolled to go to Hershey, April 18th, 19th, and 20th. They qualified. The three kids from Penn Trafford were seniors. The crime scene investigation was Sam Factor, grade 12, and Victoria Anderson, grade 12. And a criminal justice was...and she came...and he came. I don't know, it could be a girl, too. Cody Schmidt, I assumed.
He was a boy.
Boy?
Yeah, he was one of our Students of the Month a few months ago.
Okay, I missed that one. I blew that one. Okay, and that...he qualified first place for criminal justice and to go on to Hershey and her skills in the state qualifying competition. And our next meeting is February 21st this month. That's all right, Mr. President?
And just to add on to that, we also have an open house scheduled there this week.
That's for freshmen, all right?
February 8th, 9th.
That's for ninth graders.
Correct.
Yeah, because they're originally open house, they have it in, I want to say November or October.
I guess November.
Yeah, but that's for the whole school. That's a...
Do all freshmen go down for that, or just ones that want to?
The ones who sign up. About 25, they sent me a list earlier today.
You got a large mock going down, or?
Twenty-five to 28 students.
I think it's great. That's a great...Dr. Harris is really very supportive of Career Tech.
Mr. Sullivan, don't you send your kids to go down there, too, right?
Yes, we'd take every seventh grader there. They're visiting us next week as well.
And just for clarification, I did teach a student, Lauren, her name was Cody.
Cody could be a girl.
I feel bad about that, especially we...I do remember him now.
Yeah, him and his twin sister.
I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you.
And we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. We discussed personnel issues, real estate negotiations. Now to information, Dr. Harris?
Sure. And this is our favorite time of the month, because we're going to do this on the first session. It's the Students of the Month. My school board already says this is what actually...this is why they do everything as for the students. So I'm going to turn it over to our first principal, is Mr. Schwartz from Harrison Park.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Before I did the Student of the Month, I just wanted to make two announcements about upcoming events here in district. This Saturday is our Make-A-Wish Dodgeball Tournament. We have over 600 kids participating in grades K through 8. The event will run from 10 to 3. The concession stand will be open, along with this year, the Kona Ice Truck will also be there. So it's a great event for a great cause. Also this week is Harrison Park's American Spirit Week. The school will collect food for our local food banks and money to buy supplies for our troops, led by Mr. Kiefer. Our students and staff did a great job with the week's events. Since we started in 2010, we raised over $18,000 for our deployed troops. So the kids do a great job. Usually, each year we do about 15 to 20 large boxes to our food bank as well. So it's a great week. The kids dress up in red, white, and blue. And then some of our local representatives donate flags to the school. And then we give those out to the kids for dressing up in their red, white, and blue. So kudos to the staff and Mr. Kiefer for putting that together. So at this time, though, I would like to introduce Madison Jen as Harrison Park's Student of the Month. Maddie is the daughter of Matthew and Christine Jen and has an older sister, Megan, who is in ninth grade at the high school. Maddie is a fifth-grade student who enjoys learning new things and always puts forth her best effort. She credits her mom and dad with helping her do so well in her academics. Her favorite subjects are science and language arts, because she enjoys both subjects' content and sees how they apply to her future. Outside of school, Maddie participates in dancing at least five days a week at Janet's Dance Studio. She likes all types of dancing, but her favorite is the open dance. When she grows up, she would like to be an industrial engineer like her dad and to compete in dance competitions. All her teachers agree that Maddie is a wonderful student and lights up a room with her smile and bubbly personality. From the start of the school year, she jumped right in and started doing outstanding work. She is kind, considerate, and a positive role model for her classmates. Her love and experience with dance shows her true leadership, spirit, and determination. If Maddie hits a stumbling block in the classroom, she will never give up. She uses this as fuel to the fire to make her work even harder. Maddie always has a positive attitude and takes pride in her work. Her teachers are very proud of the extra effort Maddie displays and puts forth every day. Maddie is an outstanding student, possesses many of our school's core values, and is a great kid. On behalf of the students and staff of Harrison Park Elementary, we are honored to have Maddie Jen as the elementary Student of the Month.
Next, we have from Trafford Middle, Mr. St. Rogers Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I did want to make a few announcements. One of them was the Central Westmoreland Technical Center. They will be visiting us next week to speak to our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They do a nice presentation in terms of, you know, what our program is all about. So we're looking forward to that. This is also a big week for the middle schools, as Penn Middle School will visit Trafford Middle School Friday. We have our financial reality tour. So all of the eighth graders will come down to Trafford, and they'll be exposed to presenters in terms of the reality of their future finances and careers. At this time, I'd like to present to you Trafford Middle School Student of the Month, and it is Mara Coynor, eighth-grade student at Trafford Middle School. Mara is the daughter of Dr. Karen Coynor and Brian Coynor, and the older sister of Aiden Coynor, a fifth-grade student at Sunrise Estate Elementary. And I think Grandma is with us, too. First out of the chute, I asked her, I said, "What would your brother say about you as big...as a big sister?" She said, "It depended on the moment." But no, that they get along very well. Mara's accomplishments as a student, very difficult to ignore. She is a high honor student, a spectrum student. In fact, she begins her day here at the high school as she is enrolled in the English nine honors class. And she excels in all of it. She has had nothing less than an A in the three years at our middle school. Although Mara does so well academically, she also recognizes the importance of being involved in the community and in extracurricular activities. She's involved in band, plays two instruments. She is also a member of the middle school's chorus. She has demonstrated a high level of performance and leadership in both of those, as she has been selected to participate in county performances and has also been selected by her teachers as a soloist at the middle school concert. Mara also participates in the drama...in Drama Club, and this year they're performing Willy Wonka, correct? She also enjoys participating in the Spectrum Challenges, and in particular, the agriculture...no, architecture and eco-challenges. Excuse me. Mara also plays soccer for the Penn Trafford Soccer Club. She helps at Vacation Bible School and sings in the choir church. She used to ride horses. She likes to run, although short distances, right? Draw and loves to read. Mara says she has enjoyed her time at Trafford Middle School, says that she likes her teachers, in particular, all of the special classes that she's taken. But she's definitely looking forward to going to the high school, and she is certainly ready, that's for sure. Her teachers say that Mara is a well-rounded person. Mara is focused and is of strong character. She does not let others influence her actions. She maintains excellent grades, plays in the school band, sings in the choir, is a Drama Club member, and active in her church youth group. Another teacher said Mara is very detail-oriented and pushes herself to accomplish above and beyond the status quo. Another teacher, Mara is an exceptional student. She seeks outstanding in all aspects of the curriculum. Her curiosity is evident in the types and levels of questioning she asks. Mara's grade reflects her quest for perfection. Always respectful and polite, Mara can always be counted on to enhance class discussion. Mara, congratulations. We're very proud of you.
And finally, we have the high school assistant principal, is actually Mrs. Horabat now? I can't get used to that.
Just a little bit about what's happening up here at the high school. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what's happening in our media center, the literacy interns, what they're...what they've been doing recently. Three in particular, they had Hamel Manufacturing come in, which they were coming to recruit students that went down to listen to them. And we actually have some of our students starting to work there over this summer. People's Gas came in and had a little talk to the students about many...the many job opportunities in that industry. And we had a lot of interest there as well. And then also, a PA came in to explain that job, which I can say personally, because my stepdaughter was in there, and she learned a whole lot about it, and I believe that's what she wants to do. So I thought that was very...very good.
That was with the Xella, right?
Right, from Xella. She had a lot of questions, and she answered all of them, so that was good. Our forensics kids went to Penn State and toured their facilities to see their program. They talked to students that are currently taking the class and forensics professors up there, and they really enjoyed it. I think there's a lot of interest there as well. We had our first scheduling online session this past month as well, where the students actually already have their schedules set online. Now we can have that time to look at staffing and their needs and get those ready for next school year.
How many months did I save you?
Oh, a lot. A lot. So it wouldn't be...we're already pretty set.
Usually, you was finished about...
Usually had it done by the beginning of March.
March, yeah, March, April, around there.
Good, good old month.
Saved, yeah. A good amount of time. Our student council officers voluntarily went to the prayer breakfast last week with local school districts. Trial season is about to begin on Wednesday versus Joc, and I know...we know that the past two seasons have been very successful. So we're looking forward to that. And Grease is in full force rehearsal. So please consider coming to the show on April 6th, 7th, and 8th, and 13th, 14th, and 15th. So now I can introduce our Student of the Month, Josh Beers. Come on up. Your hair looks great. Josh is a senior here at Penn Trafford. He's the son of Lisa and Bob Beers, brother of Joe, who's in college. And I believe Grandma and Mom's fiancee, Jo, was here as well. I asked Josh's teachers to tell me a little bit about him, and three different teachers said the same word. They all said, "You're delightful." They all said that he is a delight to have in class. One of his teachers in particular said that he is responsible, and he does things that other students don't to take ownership of his education. And then another teacher said, "Between my management class and SAD," so you can figure out who that is, "He has been awesome. He has helped me every time that there's a video involved. Each time that he has put a video together, he has done it with an outstanding job and makes sure that he is doing what is expected of him. And FYI, he's not even in SAD. So he's doing these things for the SAD program. He's not in the program." And then I myself have my own experience with Josh. So it goes back to third grade, but I won't talk about that. I'm going to talk about the experiences here from this summer on. Josh is the student section leader. I don't know if you know what that is, but they are self-appointed, that they take charge of the student sections here in our sporting events. He shared that responsibility on football season with Sean Kelly, and then now basketball with Jake Prady. So the common person there is Josh. For the first time ever, as far as I've asked around, the student section stood up and sat down all together and listened to what he said, because he figured it out. He got himself a whiteboard. He handed it. He held it up. And they sat down when he said, "Sit down." I don't know if you understand how important that is, but it was pretty impressive. That was his idea. He met with us, with administration, with the cheerleaders and the band, and we all worked together to come together with the themes. He would put them out on Twitter, so anytime that's set out, he's the one who's doing that, and make sure that those themes are appropriate. We have these conversations a lot. And if he wants to change it, he comes and he talks to me, and we make sure it's appropriate. Recently, we received an email from the Plum Athletic Director, who said that the behavior of our student section was outstanding at the basketball game. One of those things that they were especially complimentary about was if you were at the game, the audio did not work for the Star Spangled Banner for the National Anthem. And especially since what's going on these days, I think the student section leaders took it upon themselves to start singing the National Anthem. So the whole entire place sang the National Anthem instead of the tape. So I think that's pretty cool. And then he goes over, he plays songs, the whole...the whole place kind of sings together. And to me, that's what a student leader should be. So I think that's impressive that...and it's Josh. So I'm proud of him for that. So I nominated Josh because he's delightful, as his teachers say. He's responsible, and he's a respected leader among his student body. As we know, sometimes perception is everything. So we want our students to behave like this and show good sportsmanship and leadership, and Josh exemplifies that. So this is what he does for us. We'll miss you next year and hope you pass your torch on to someone just like you.
We are going to take a moment to get a photo with the Students of the Month. So the students can come over to the side for the press. It's really a big honor, because if you think about it, during the year, we only have 24 Students of the Month. We have 3,900 students, so do the math.
There's six of us.
Six of us.
Six of us.
I have a lot of fun with Rod, because I'm great with Rod.
I thought maybe you grew up together, but apparently not.
We sort of did, but he's old.
Yeah, he's over 70.
Yeah, I'm 60. We sort of did.
How old are you?
I'm 60.
All right. When did you get 63?
No, in S H 19.
So you're older than me.
Stretching out period for us?
But no, but there was other Romita.
Exercise online.
You know one of them? I get pissed.
Romitos have a...
No, he doesn't have any kids.
No, no, that's a different Romita.
And actually, Mara, she's a repeat winner?
He only has like a...
We didn't mention that from before, she's one of my second or third kids here who repeated.
She'll do it again in high school. She'll do it again in high school.
You have to go for the trifecta.
Trifecta.
We haven't had trifecta yet.
Aiden, we'll see you in middle school.
But there's some cousins involved there.
Yeah, 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 no, it was Danny.
I just wanted to mention, too, that Roger's also in charge of our cyber school. And how many students do you have?
To date, let's see, 58, 56.
56. Remember, we have our own PT cyber school that has taken off, and it was good. Not everyone is actually a full cyber school, they may only have like one class, they have to make up to.
Correct.
56, and it's a nice thing about it, it's kids who are not leaving our district for cyber school, they're staying in-house. That makes a big difference.
We enrolled our first elementary student at McCollum this past month.
Then our second favorite part of the month is when we have our high school student representative. Colton, you want to step forward?
I think Mrs. Horvath, I'm sorry, Mrs. Horvath covered most of it. Mock Trial does start on Wednesday. We do our, I believe it's our plaintiff faces Yawk. Scheduling has taken place last month. The quiz team won their conference tournament and came in second in the conference itself at Mount Pleasant High School, and other than that, not much has happened.
Sorry, I took a finger.
Were you in Grease practice tonight?
Yes.
I probably should have had you go first, I do apologize for that. Next time that happens, just step in and say, "I'm a pray," if I can just give my, just remind me. I do apologize for you waiting for that time to come down and do that. Who are you this year? Who are you playing in Grease?
I'm Roger.
And he's actually a leader, one of the leaders at the basketball games, too. We've watched him from the sidelines.
Yes, you might be a good takeover.
There you go. So I have to ask you, the one game you had, like the megaphone thingy, why did they take that off you?
Apparently, the one referee thought I was screaming too loud.
Okay. We saw them take it off, and we were like, "What?" Too loud.
Some people just sort of have to have fun.
New world.
Well, thank you so much for coming, I really appreciate it. A couple other things we just had on our plate, just a reminder, the Purse Bash, this is the annual event by the Penn Trafford Community Edge Foundation, is March 3rd. So Ms. Kelly's actually our chair, how's it going?
We need to sell tickets, so, yeah. Let's read the word.
How much are the tickets?
Oh, $30.
$30. And we have DJ Dela Bill there, who, people have a good time, just so you know.
Everyone leaves our Purse Bash happy, even the people who don't win a purse, because we have a lot of entertainment, it's fun, and...
No.
Sean, you working this year?
That's very, very nice event. For a good cause.
It is a good cause.
I put your name on there. I'll never forget.
I'll be there.
We appreciate that.
All the money raised goes back into the classrooms.
It does, it's really good. It's also a fun event.
Yes, it is. Last year was my first year, and it was surprisingly entertaining.
I was telling another person who was going to Purse Bash about like the dancing, and they looked me in the face, they said, "There's no dancing at a Purse Bash." And I said, "Well, there is at ours."
Do you win a purse?
You have a chance. You have a chance.
Gun Bash?
Oh, yeah.
It's a Purse Bash for, same kind.
For purses, you want a purse bill?
There is a receipt you can also trade it in for like a suit.
That's how I feel about purses.
That's the process of it, purses. That's what my plan is.
Talking about dancing, is there a mini-thon? It could be held somewhere.
There is a mini-thon, but when is that coming?
Can you tell us about it?
It's a, we met with the people from the Four Diamonds about a month ago now. She talked to the junior class about thinking about using that as their senior project next year, and we recruited about 60 kids to do this. So it would be little events throughout the year next year that would all culminate in the mini, in a dance-type thing at the end of next school year.
Where's that? When is that?
We're not sure yet.
And Mr. Swart, don't you have some of your teachers involved in that, too? I believe so, is that Ms. Cumberland?
Mrs. Cumberland, yes, I would. It's spearheading that, yeah.
Any Louis Vuittons?
If you give us some money, we'll buy Louis.
We're having a text-dependent analysis training, and this is for teachers in grades four to eight of reading, and that's going to be on the 14th and 15th, and the 20th and 21st. I do appreciate the board okaying the training, because this is actually one of the areas where we're actually weak in, so we actually wanted to find out a way to get better. I'm actually excited about that. Security drills, they did change with the new requirements this year. They basically want one of your security drills to have the police involvement. Now, we're very lucky here with Penn Township, because we always have drills with them involved. There's actually a state requirement, so we're going to actually have to schedule one, make sure we have one with them at each of the buildings. And they also want us to now advertise it prior to having it, which is something we never usually have done in the past, just to let the parents know what is going on. So it's kind of communicating with the parents and everyone that we're having the drill. So you're going to be seeing more of that March and April. We kind of want to get through like the snow and the cold with the drills. Two of our students will be setting out with the help of Mr. Quill, a J R O T C survey, so we're very excited about that. They have it already set to go out, so more information will come once we get the results back from the survey. Kindergarten registration happened the last week of January. We have 199 kindergarteners registered for the fall. The trouble is with us, with the way we're collecting data, this is actually a very high year for us, but over the last couple of years, whether we had 177, 166, 156 register in January, we tend to always stay about 236 to 240 in the fall. So I'm not sure this means that we just are just getting into advertisement now quick, or more people responding, or is there really going to be a little boost in the height? So we won't know until school starts, so something to look forward to. And two other things, we really want to thank Penn Township and the Trafford or the Manor Road crews for always being out and calling me in the morning and keeping me updated. There is a new email chain that the Penn Township started, so I know exactly when everyone is released to go to work, and exactly what time they're out. I can tell you they're already tomorrow, they're going to be, they'll be out at 4:00 in the morning, because they already sent me an email this afternoon in preparation. So I like hearing that, so it's something good. And they did a great job this morning as we were on time. And finally, our football team, and this is something, we just want to make this aware to everyone, we'll get a chance to have Game Plan for Life Breakfast with Joe Gibbs. It's a volunteer for kids who want to go. Actually going to be in March 7th. Colton, did you receive one?
Sadly, no. I'm going to block child practice.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we, because you use on the football team, correct? I just wanted to make sure everyone receives one. Actually, you know what, you can, oh, you know what, I wonder if he's taken, is he taking seniors or all football?
I thought he was starting just with seniors.
Maybe that's why he didn't receive one, it's my apology, this for the seniors. This actually sounds very interesting and a great opportunity. He was a three-time Super Bowl champion, Pro Football Hall of Fame, three-time NASCAR champion, NASCAR champion, and New York Times Bestseller, or the author, Game Plan for Life. I'm actually going to take advantage of it and probably go down to with the football team and hear them talk.
We were, if I can add, we were fortunate, there was an individual, these are like $20 a ticket, and someone is financing for our whole team to be able to go. And they're supposed to be schools from Gateway, Franklin, Hemphill, Hampton, and Woodland Hills. So it should be quite a turnout, it's at the Monroeville Convention Center.
I think it's a great opportunity, and it's something that we're very fortunate to And believe it or not, that's all I have for information. Next week, we're going to ask you for under athletics and extracurricular to accept resignations, employee personnel, approve volunteer coaches, and approve a new pilot Warrior's Dance Team. And Amy, are you able to tell us something about the Warrior's?
The Warrior's, they are, there's a local dance instructor who's been actually asking us for a while about starting a dance team to go, not kind of, not stuff over, you know, the cheerleaders, but just something separate, because there's a lot of kids that dance, and there's no outlet for them here, so she wanted to start something and see where it went. So we met with her, and Tony met with her, sound like we'd give it a try.
Sounds like a great opportunity. Under budget and finance, approve reimbursement for credits earned by professional employees, approve a lease agreement with Apple Computers to purchase teacher laptops. Scott, is that new money, or is that, what is that lease for?
Well, we currently have our existing teacher laptops under a two-year, or four-year lease. We're going to sell those laptops, and the money that we receive for them, we're going to put towards a new lease. So our lease payments are about $60,000 a year, so we'll just throw that same lease payment into it. And the philosophy is that, you know, we, every two years, you get new machines, and you don't have to worry about them breaking down, the maintenance issues, so it just keeps the fresh machines in the teacher's hands, so they don't have to worry about the breaking down, the software upgrades and all those kinds of things. So it's a budgeted item, so we don't see any increase in our budget at all.
And that's approximately 3,000 units, right?
No, 270.
270?
Yeah.
It's for the teachers, it's not for the kids.
Okay.
Chromebook is what I'm thinking of then.
We won't have anything for buildings around safety, employee relations, negotiations, transportation, food service. Under personnel and curriculum, we're going to ask you to approve the substitute teachers and support personnel, approve leave requests, employee personnel, accept resignation, approve a termination, issue professional contracts, approve out-of-state conference requests, approve the band trip request, and approve the makeup day and changes in the 2017, 18 school calendar. That was basically due to the two days we had off due, one was a cold school day, and one was due to the snow. Under policy, Public Relations Legislative Title II, Accept and File Information Committee meeting minutes of January 8, 2018, tentative approval of new and revised school board policies, attachments, and admin regulations. One of them is the 808, and that's actually for the, you might hear it in the news called lunch shaming on policy. It's all the things they put in place, so there's no longer, kids aren't shamed, because they don't have money to buy their food, buy a lunch, they will still get to meal. If the student does owe money, it's not up to the cafeteria worker to discuss it with the student, it's something that is discussed with the parents. This way, the kid doesn't feel bad about it, and then the other kids around them don't overhear that this is happening as well. So there's different, a couple other different things they put in place, just to strengthen that, keep the kids not embarrassed. We also have the 819, which deals with suicide awareness, prevention, and training. So there's a lot of, our school psychologist already went through everything and made the updates and changes to the method of intervention. Greg, I know you worked very hard on that, is there anything else you want to mention?
That's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. And we will be sharing this with the admin at our February 13 meeting, I'll make sure everything's given out to the staff as well. And policy 302, that just basically deals with the employment of superintendent, assistant superintendent. The biggest change is that you have to at least tell the superintendent or assistant superintendent 90 days prior to expiration of contract versus 150. I'm just giving you three years and like 90 days notice.
If you want to fire us?
Yes.
You got to do it.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice notice.
All right. And we also want you to do final approval of revised board policies, approved or rescined admin regulations, and we won't have anything for taxes, insurance, and census, recognition of visitors, we don't have any. I'll just jump in there, Mr. Katsik. Paul, you want to, this is back to you?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Harris, PTA representative, Mr. Ryanear.
Nothing to deny.
Thank you, Mr. Ryanear. All right. Now, meeting adjourned at 7:42.